Okay, we'll come back to order. Move into committee of the whole for May 27th. Go ahead, Catherine.
Resolved that the agenda for the May 27th, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting be approved as presented.
Mover and secretary please. Deputy Warden Ketchum and Councilor Latham, all in favor. Motion carries, adopts in the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on May 13th, 2025 be adopted.
Mover and secretary please. Councilor Cookett, Councilor Noble, all in favor. Motion carries. Any disclosure of community interests or general nature thereof? See none. Any members' motions? See none. Move down reports, 6.1 Manager of Economic Development, Tourism Strategic Initiatives, Elgin Incentives Improvement. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to council, the Elgin Incentives Community Improvement Plan began in 2015 with the goal to stimulate economic growth, diversification, to improve the quality of place for residents and visitors, and to improve the sustainability and stability of the tax base. So the program was initially implemented for a 10-year period ending in December of 2025. In order to determine the future of the program, council approved a comprehensive review in fall of 2024. Over the past few months, we have been working with Republic Urbanism to complete this review. Today, we have Jesse McPhail from Republic with us to present the results of the review. So following Jesse's presentation, staff will address how to move forward with implementing the recommended actions. And I will now pass things along to Jesse.
Go ahead, Jesse, if you're available. Can you hear us, Jesse? Not indicating we can. There now? Nope, your mouse moving, but we can't hear you. Anything there now, Jesse?
There we go. Got it. Little technical difficulties there, sorry about that.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, members of council. So I do apologize, I probably missed the first little bit there. But I am here to talk to Elgin County Council today here about a project that we've been working on with Caroline over the last couple of months, which was reviewing the county's Community Improvement Plan, Elgin Incentives. So I do have a brief slide deck that I will pull up. But before I do that, I'll just introduce myself. So my name is Jesse McPhail. I'm a planner and partner with Republic Urbanism. So we're an urban planning and design consulting firm based out of Montreal. But we have done quite a bit of work in Southern Ontario, particularly with Elgin County. Many of you are probably familiar with my colleague, Paul Hicks, as well, who does send his regrets today. So I will just pull up my slide deck here and we'll get going. Okay, so just a bit of a brief agenda today. So I'll run through kind of the purpose of the review, the impetus for that project, give a bit of a brief background on Elgin incentives. And I'll summarize the findings that were arrived at from the review process, as well as touching on briefly some of the recommendations and next steps to come out of this process. So the purpose of the review of Elgin incentives, the plan itself, plan is simple. It's reaching its 10th anniversary. So it's a 10-year-old plan. Typically, community improvement plans, that is a standard horizon for those plans. So it's probably the prime opportunity and timing to review that plan to make sure that it is still relevant and still meeting the needs and priorities of the county and its constituent local municipalities. So we did start a review of this document and this plan with Carolyn and the team earlier in the year. The purpose of this review was kind of five parts. The first was to understand how the program has performed over the last 10 years. So we did a look at historical data that was collected in terms of application numbers, investments, the number of grants applied for, and so forth. We wanted to look at the economic impact of the program, reviewing how Elgin incentives programming stacks up against other CIPs and other peer jurisdictions. So a jurisdictional scan was carried out to help us kind of baseline how the county compares to some of its neighbors. We reviewed the capacity of the county and local municipal partners to effectively implement Elgin incentives. So as many on council likely know, the county administers the Community Improvement Plan, but it is largely implemented at the local level through the local municipalities. And the fifth was ensuring that Elgin incentives, as I mentioned, continues to be aligned with county and local planning and active goals and objectives. So there's been some priorities that have shifted over the last 10 years, particularly as a lot of communities are looking to focus a little more on housing improvement and outcomes and affordability. So that was one of the kind of lenses that we took going into this review. In terms of Elgin incentives background itself, so for those, just a bit of a refresher here. A Community Improvement Plan, or CIP, is passed under the authority of Section 28 of the Planning Act. So this is an important tool for municipalities because they are otherwise prohibited from bonusing or providing direct financial incentives to private landowners, businesses, organizations. There are some exceptions in there, but generally the municipal act prohibits that, with the exception that if a municipality has a Community Improvement Plan adopted that outlines programs and priorities and goals associated with the transfers of those incentives, municipalities can do so. One of the interesting facts actually about Elgin incentives is that, you know, being adopted in 2015, CIPs were typically a lower tier or a local municipality tool that was used for a number of years. Elgin incentives was actually the first CIP in Ontario to be administered and funded by an upper tier or a regional authority. This resulted in the recipients of an Excellence in Planning Award by OPI, so the Ontario Professional Planners Institute. So council should definitely be proud of that. And this is certainly a plan that has had a lot of impact in the community over the last 10 years, and they should continue to be proud of it. There are five key areas of focus in the current plan. So these are involved with business retention and expansion, downtown revitalization, tourism and agriculture support, employment growth and diversification, and improving sustainability and accessibility. So quite a forward-looking plan, quite a diverse spread of priorities for the plan, which is standard typical, historically, CIPs were originally popular with downtown kind of main street areas, core areas. And over the last, you know, I would say, five to 10 years, CIPs have been expanded to include some more of those rural economic development opportunities and agricultural areas. And I will say that Elgin incentives certainly was a little bit ahead of the pack in terms of implementing those outside of your more traditional downtown. So again, another thing to be proud of with the CIP. It does offer 12 grant programs under nine granting streams. So here are a couple here. So these range from facade improvements to energy efficiency retrofitting, development feasibility, environmental study grants, brownfield remediation. One of the ones that is a little bit different, that is not really listed here, but the plan also offers a tax increment grant. So this is a little bit of a different structure from your traditional kind of matching grant or upfront grants. These tax increment grants are generally reserved for major redevelopment projects that will result in a significant change in assessed value on a property. And the grant is essentially a relief or deferral on the counties and the local municipalities collecting their respective portions of municipal taxes on that increase for a set period of years. So again, a wide variety of programs offered under the plan. So it's definitely generated quite a bit of interest in the community. Speaking of which, since 2015, the county has approved $1.56 million in grant funding to fund just shy of $9.5 million that were invested across the county by applicants themselves. So when they fill out their applications, they're providing estimates of construction costs and that. The success rate or the approval rate for applications is quite high. And I think this is speaking to the good job that staff do with implementation and preconsulting and speaking with the community on their applications before they're submitted. We're looking at, again, a 90% approval rate for applications. And then we have just a bit of a, looking at how those approvals are spread throughout the county. So we have Central Elgin and South Wald and Elmer kind of leading the pack in terms of number of grants approved. But it is generally spread throughout the county. In terms of where these grants are being offered and the projects are being carried out, it's generally three quarters of the applications are kind of found in the settlement areas. And this is pretty unsurprising, just given the level of development and the diversity of development opportunities in the settlement areas, which lend themselves to a greater volume of community improvement projects. The other 29% to 30% of projects is located in the agricultural area. And again, this is speaking to Elgin County's diverse opportunities for rural economic development, agri-tourism, and those sorts of projects. So again, a good mix of community improvement projects spread throughout the counties, different areas. In terms of the incentives that are the most popular, we did look at breaking down the number of applications submitted and the number of grants approved on a per-program basis. The Building Improvement and Restoration Grant was by far the most popular. The county did approve around $773,000 in grant funding for this program with facade improvement and signage improvement coming in, in second and third respectively, at $333,000 and $160,000. But generally speaking, I mean, a lot of the projects did tap into multiple grants at the same time, so they have that ability to. But a good, healthy mix of different grant programs being tapped into, which does speak to the viability and the relevance of these programs still today. So in terms of our review, we did go through kind of a diagnostic analysis of the document. So we did read it front to back. We took a look at different best practices, changes in legislation. We looked at the county's official plan, as well as each of the local municipalities, and how they are implementing the CIP and where some gaps may exist between the two levels of jurisdiction, as well as with respect to policies and local official plans as well for enabling the Community Improvement Plan. So some of the key findings from this review included a need to review the funding amounts within each of the incentive programs to ensure that they reflect the cost of development and redevelopment, which I will note has risen sharply even in the last kind of year or so. So the grants in a CIP, they do need to be identified as a dollar amount in the programming. And one of the important things that the county will want to do as they look at refreshing their CIP and updating it is looking to see if those grant amounts are still moving the needle at this point 10 years later. I will note that the grants available, I believe the maximum grant aside from the tax increment, which is a little bit of a different framework. But these grants range anywhere from $2,500 to $10,000, depending on the project and whether it's located in a priority area or not. One of the other findings was examining the introduction of more grant streams related to housing. So affordable housing has become a crucial priority for every municipality to tackle, whether it's an upper tier or a local. So that was one of the gaps that we identified in the programming. Some of the redevelopment incentives and construction incentives did target this somewhat with respect to upper-floor conversions of mixed-use buildings and commercial mixed-use. But by and large, a solely dedicated housing incentive program is absent from the plan. So that's a great opportunity for the county to look at introducing one to tackle that. One of the other findings was exploring ways to attract more large-scale and impactful projects in addition to small projects. So we want to make sure that we're still splitting that pie quite evenly across the board as there is a lot of diverse interest in the programming. General updates to the CIP with more accessible language and guidance material. So we did carry out a survey and interviews with the local municipalities, as well as a workshop with the community, just kind of tap into some of the challenges that they may experience, what's working well, what's maybe not working as well. And I think the general consensus was just creating a more accessible and approachable process and information and presence online. The streamlining of administration to reduce staff burden and encourage more applications. So this would have to do with application submission, coordination between the county and the locals, wherever that CIP is being implemented, and just looking to tighten up some of the implementation side of things. I will note that the CIP is relatively in a good spot with respect to that. So there is some good processes and step-by-steps in place, but just again, working to hone those. And then the last was developing a marketing strategy to ensure that the business community and public are aware of the program. So we did have mixed responses to some of the questions that we had at the interviews and the public survey, where folks may not be as familiar with the program or may not understand that their project may be eligible for an incentive until it's too late. And one of the kind of key factors with a community improvement plan is that if you do, it's meant to fund a project from the start. So generally speaking, if a project is already kind of halfway through or started, any works that were done before applying to the grant are not eligible generally for funding. So just ensuring that a marketing strategy to ensure that, you know, the CIP is known to the community, but also celebrating projects as well. So there are some areas for improvement there, just to help, you know, follow up the projects and really celebrate those. So one of the key kind of recommendations and next steps for this project will be looking at undertaking a comprehensive update to the plan. So this exercise largely formed the foundational kind of background work and analysis to help the county now, and Carolyn and her team, move forward with pursuing some tangible changes to the plan and look at injecting some different programming, some augmentations to that plan to make sure that it still meets the needs of the county. So this would be, this would be looking at undertaking a revisioning exercise to, again, make sure the vision and goals and strategic direction for the plan reflect the current environment in the county today. So again, one of the particular items was housing. The plan is relatively silent on affordability and housing. So that may be an area that's kind of a quick win for injecting that plan. Developing a revised Community Improvement Plan framework that incorporates the recommended structural and administrative changes that were complemented or contemplated, rather, in the background report. So again, we did go through on a section by section and identify some areas for improvement there with respect to tidying up the document and making it a little easier to implement. And the last is working with local municipal partners and county councils to reassess program funding and new incentive streams. So the Community Improvement Plan is very much a joint effort between the county and the local municipalities in terms of its administration and the benefits that are seen from successful projects. So again, just reinforcing that cooperative nature and that strong communication line between the local municipalities who are sort of at the front line in terms of consulting with potential applicants and working with Carolyn and their team to implement the plan and approve the incentive projects. So very much kind of, again, that key recommendation is undertaking a comprehensive update. But really, the plan's got great bones. I don't foresee a significant change in sort of the structure of that plan. It's very much going to be kind of spot updates and just making sure that, again, it's as powerful of a tool as it can be. So some of the other immediate steps would also be launching an online application system and more centralized CIP information hub. There were different levels of access, depending on the municipality that was observed in terms of website materials and just tracking down where to apply, where to find applications, where to find information on eligibility requirements. So looking at, you know, potentially looking at like a digital form submission to help ease that application process, looking at developing targeted marketing campaigns to establish local champions to promote the program. So again, working with the local municipalities, as well as celebrating projects, and then implementing new tracking mechanisms to ensure regular performance reporting to local and county councils. So on that last note, I will say that the county has been fantastic over the last 10 years with tracking data. That made our job a thousand times easier because the county did have very robust, a very robust data tracking Excel table. So I was able to significantly reduce the amount of workload on my end in terms of putting that together. And I was able to jump into the analysis. So I think the main takeaway for that would be just, you know, looking at more regular performance reporting, again, to local and county councils on that data, because it is interesting and it is nice to see that level of investment in the community, by the community and from the county, as well as the local municipalities. And that brings us to the end of my brief slide deck here. I did try to keep it relatively brief. The report itself is quite lengthy, so I would encourage, there's some interesting stuff in there. So if council wants to take a dive in, I would certainly encourage you to. But with that said, Mr. Warden, I would pass it back to you. If there's any questions or comments, I'm happy to, happy to entertain those.
Thank you for the presentation, Jesse. And you're right, there's a lot of information there to digest and something that you can spend a lot of nights reading through. But a lot of information there. And any questions for Jesse or Carolyn? Carolyn, you have, go ahead.
If I may, I will briefly address the proposed next steps. So as highlighted in the staff report, the county does not have the authority to adopt a Community Improvement Plan itself. To update the Elgin Incentives CIP, we do need to work closely with all of our local municipal partners. And once we have developed a revised framework incorporating the updated vision and direction along with the recommended structural and administrative changes, each of our local municipal partners would need to follow the statutory notification and public consultation requirements for community improvement plans. They would also be required to review their official plans to make sure that their official plans contain the correct provisions to enable the updated CIP program in their communities. And so staff are proposing to continue working with Republic Urbanism to facilitate the planning part of this process. Staff would work on the online portal on our end and doing those administrative changes. But for the planning side of things, we're proposing to continue working with Republic Urbanism. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn. You have a resolution first?
Resolved that council directs staff to commence the preparation of a comprehensive update to the existing Elgin Incentives Community Improvement Plan.
Mover and secretary please. Deputy Warden Ketchum and Councilor Noble. Councilor Noble, I thought, saw hand to. Any discussion or questions? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Carolyn, thank you very much to you and Jesse for bringing this report forward. The, there's a lot of information there, as you've indicated, Mr. Warden. Couple of questions. One, are there any particular funding streams from the last 10 years that are declining in popularity? Something that might be reconsidered or even taken out of the deck?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. You just let me know if you want me to jump in.
Absolutely, feel free to jump in if I miss anything. So one of the grants that hasn't had as high of an uptake is the Public Art Grant. So that's one that we haven't seen a whole lot of applications to. There are a few others that haven't had a whole lot of applications, but would be very beneficial to continue. So one of them is the permit, planning fees one. It hasn't had a whole lot of uptake, but that could be very beneficial to stimulating development in the community. And another one that hasn't had a whole lot of uptake just yet is for the feasibility studies. But that is one that we did hear that some businesses are interested in. They just may not have been as aware of that as they should be.
Councilor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to Jesse or Carolyn. Thank you very much for that report. It certainly was very thorough. I'm glad to see full review. It does mention that Section 4.6 deals with funding affordable housing. I'm very pleased to see that affordable housing has been added to the CIP plan. There's not a lot of detail in your report concerning the amounts that would be available for affordable housing. I do notice that in doing comparison of other municipalities, that some of the revitalization downtown is not specifically affordable housing. So I guess I'm rambling a bit, but I guess my question is that, do you have any specifics in terms of affordable housing support? And does that include general downtown, I guess, general downtown revitalization in housing when the report comes out? Thank you.
I can answer that first, and I'll allow Jesse to jump in. So through you, Mr. Warden, to Councilor Cookett. The current CIP does not address affordable housing, however, our official plan does. And I think that Section 4.1 whatever is referring to our official plan that lists affordable housing as a priority. So with that, it would be possible to include affordable housing with a specific grant stream in an updated and revised CIP. The current CIP addresses housing only in areas of mixed use. For example, if there is a storefront using the upper floor as housing. So the current CIP does cover that, but that's the only housing-related grant stream in the current plan.
Sorry, may I follow up? So just to be clear, that the new CIP will look at affordable housing. Right, thank you.
I know Carolyn and I sat in on a Zoom meeting from down around, the communities were down around Hamilton, I believe, back in the winter. And that was what they were focusing on and they're proud of us for information. But it's something we hadn't even thought about at that point, that they're going in a completely different direction than where we initially started from. Be interesting to see how they move forward on that. The other questions or concerns?
I think Dominique.
Oh, Dominique, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, maybe one clarification, maybe one request and one suggestion. The clarification on the governance, if I understood correctly, the, this program is coordinated and operated on behalf of the local municipal partners. And we don't have local municipal partners who have another program in addition, who have their own CIPs. That's my first clarification.
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden, to Councilor Jagar, that is correct. We do. We do administer the program on behalf of our local municipal partners. I do believe that Dutton Dunwich and the Town of Elmer may have their own community improvement plans, but I'm not aware of any other communities in in Elgin that have their own CIP.
Okay, thank you for that. And if I may, Mr. Warden, so a request out of that would be, I don't know if it's in the plans to come and deliver a presentation to each local municipal partners with, you know, kind of the overview, a little bit of the big picture, but perhaps also a zoomed in version of the report for that particular municipality and perhaps some specific recommendations and some findings that you found particular. Because I know today you shared general trends, but I bet like, once you break it down a little bit, I I think it would be interesting for members of council at the local level to to hear that and and to have that sort of local flavor and and local discussions. Is that in the plan?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Jager. As part of updating and revising the CIP, definitely that visioning exercise would involve all of the local municipal partners. However, we could entertain something prior to that, letting each local municipal partner know about this exercise. The the staff have been involved with doing presentations to the local councils of of the review before we officially start revising that plan. So that is something that we could entertain.
Great. And my my final suggestion, if I may, through you, Mr. Warden, is I really, really appreciate that the the quality of the report, there is a gold mine of data that I'm hoping will be mined for several initiatives and in the county across departments. Like this data should be owned, you know, by all departments and and shared. Thinking, I think in our plans for this year, for example, there's a communications strategy that we want to work on and to to improve. And there's, there's really, really good data in terms of demographics and and growth and and all of that. And yeah, so there's all sorts of really good data. I could see several county departments really digging into that. So I hope that the utilization of this information and the investment that we made in collecting this information will be maximized. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Jair. Any other questions or concerns? That was a great report, Carolyn, and keep up the great work. There's resolution? No. It did, we, yeah, that's right, we already did that. If there's no further questions, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Carolyn. Next up, we have Director of Engineering Services and Tourism Oriented Directional Sign Agreement. Peter Flores, yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of County Council. This report recommends entering into an agreement with Canadian Tods to provide an option for tourism businesses within Elgin County. To support local tourism, vendors who wish to participate in purchase signage through Canadian Tods Limited must enter the county. To facilitate that process, the county must enter into an agreement to permit the installation of signage on county roads. Staff have reviewed the standard Trailblazer sign agreement, which is attached to the report with Canadian Tods Limited, and recommend the execution of the agreement to facilitate the signage program opportunity to local tourism businesses. There's no cost to the county and we will receive $150 administration fee per intersection where signage is installed, and that could include one or numerous signs. The county does have the ability to approve those sign locations as well. Tourism vendors who in the future then who request signage along county roads to support their businesses would be directed to Canadian Tods Limited to facilitate the participation in their program. I would be pleased to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Peter. Questions for Peter? Oh, first we have to have a resolution.
Resolved that the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk and the Warden be directed and authorized to enter into the standard agreement with Canadian Tods Limited to provide tourism directional information signage along county roads.
Mover in second, please. Counselor Widner, Counselor Hance, questions for Peter? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Warden, to Peter. Like all signage, is it the responsibility of the local municipal partner to install those signs?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Deputy Warden Ketchabah, no. This is completely a program that's facilitated by Canadian Tods. They have local contractors who will not only install the signage but repair and maintain the signage should it be damaged. The agreement speaks to the the response time in which that would be completed and there would be no additional responsibility for the county or the local municipality.
Bonus. Any other questions for Peter? Seeing no further question, oh, go ahead, Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Peter. Are these signs that can be black and white?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner. I think we've all seen a lot of these signs on the 401. They've been consistently blue with white lettering and there are standard symbols, fonts that that also support whatever type of tourism business that they're attempting to advertise. I I apologize, the agreement is in black and white and it looks like they're black with white lettering, but they are blue with white lettering.
Any further questions? And I'll call the vote, all in favor? Motion carries. And we'll move down to Peter's next report regarding reduction, reduced speed zone, George, St. George Street. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of County Council. This report recommends an amendment to our regulatory speed zone bylaw to ensure adherence to engineering standards and to provide consistent guidance to drivers. The county of Elgin undertook the reconstruction of St. George Street in 2024. Final adjustments in surface asphalt are to be completed in 2025. The project scope included the installation of steel beam guide rail immediately north of the CNR railway crossing due to a collision history at this location. An aerial view of the steel beam guide rail that was installed is shown in the photo on the top of page 128 of the report. After the guide rail was installed, staff received a concern with respect to sightlines available for pedestrians wishing to cross St. George Street at this location. At scene, as seen in the photo at the bottom of page 128, drivers may have an obstructed view of pedestrians who wish to cross St. George Street at a specific location. Although most vehicles travel at 38 kilometers or less here due to the horizontal geometry of the roadway and sufficient sightlines are available for 38 kilometers per hour, the posted speed limit on this section of road is 50 kilometers an hour. And insufficient sightlines are available for 50 kilometers an hour if a vehicle were to travel at 50 kilometers an hour. Therefore, in order to provide consistent messaging to drivers and ensure safe sight distance is available, staff recommends reducing the posted speed limit in this area from 50 to 30 kilometers an hour, as depicted on the attached drawing, and that is on page 131 of the report. The entire area is approximately 460 meters in length. Be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions or concerns? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Resolved that the Reduced Speed Zone Bylaw 2058 be amended to include a 30 kilometer per hour reduced speed zone on St. George Street, County Road 26, from 50 meters north of Independent Street to 50 meters northwest of Hydro Road for a total distance of 460 meters.
Mover in second, please. Counselor Noble, Deputy Warden Ketchabah. Questions for Peter? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't oppose this. I think it's probably a good idea. Just a question, Peter, had this amendment been requested from someone, the public central Elgin?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Deputy Warden Ketchabah. There was a concern about the sightlines that were available, which prompted staff to undertake the study. We made an assumption that the guide rail fully obscured oncoming vehicles and out of an abundance of caution, we're making this recommendation to also mirror what traffic is really doing in the area. It's be very difficult unless you were in, unless you attempted to try 50 kilometers an hour in this area. So we have advisory signage right now posted at 20 kilometers an hour. And staff confirmed through the tools we have that that is the safe and comfortable speed in which the curves can be negotiated. We then conducted a traffic study and found that most vehicles travel at 38 kilometers or less. But again, because the posted speed limit is 50, we thought we better sign it regulatorily at 30, just to ensure consistent messaging and also address the concerns from the public that were received.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter. And next we have senior planner, we have Diane Morris here for draft plan of subdivision for Township of Southold, the 35743 Horton Street. Welcome, Diane, go, go ahead.
Good morning, Warden and Council. Pleased to be for you this morning to discuss the proposed draft plan of subdivision for lands located in the township of Southold at 35743 Horton Street in the town of Shedden. The lands are approximately 20.7 hectares with 91.33 meters of frontage along Union Road and 21 meters of frontage on Talbot Line. The applicant is proposing to develop the subject lands for a total of 124 units in phase one and approximately 107 units in phase two. The lands are within the tier two settlement area within the county of Elgin official plan. The lands are located in an area serviced by the municipal water supply and will be serviced by the future township wastewater treatment plan. The Township of Southold official plan designates the lands as residential within the Shedden Settlement Area, which supports a variety of housing options. The lands are zoned settlement reserve and agricultural one in the Township of Southold zoning bylaw. In order to proceed with the proposed development, a zoning bylaw amendment was submitted to rezone the lands to various residential two and three site specifications. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment was passed by bylaw number 2025-27 by Township Council on April 14th, 2025, and the draft plan of subdivision was endorsed on January 27th, 2025, subject to County Council's approval. County staff have reviewed the subject application under the requirements of the Planning Act, the provincial planning statement, county official plan, and the Township of Southold official plan, and are satisfied that the application meets all relevant requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of draft plan of subdivision 34T-SO2402, subject to the conditions in appendix G of the staff report. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diane. Resolution, please.
Resolved that council, the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grants draft plan approval to draft plan of subdivision 34TSO2402 Township of Southold 35743 Horton Street, Shedden by Dillon Consulting Limited on behalf of 1873828 Ontario Limited dated October 31st, 2024, and that staff be directed to provide notice of decision subject to the conditions of final approval in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Mover in second, please. Counselor Hanson, Counselor Latham. Any questions for Diane? Yeah, I'm not sure why Rodney's there, but go ahead, Diane.
Sorry, through you, yes, there was, when it was downloaded, I thought that I deleted that that one, so it's a work in progress. So I apologize for that, but I believe that the other plan showing Shedden was also included. So I apologize for that.
It is about the right spot, but anyway, any other questions? If not, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Diane. Moving down, down to our next draft plan of subdivision Township of Malahide. Go ahead.
Now before you is a proposed draft plan of subdivision for lands in the Township of Malahide located at 9270 Rogers Road. The lands are approximately 3.4 hectares in size with 167 meters of frontage along Rogers Road and lands are currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the subject lands as an infill residential subdivision with the creation of 11 lots with access via new roadway, which will intersect with Rogers Road to the west and terminating into a temporary turning circle at the east end. The lands are designated within the agricultural area within the county of Elgin official plan. It's important to note that although these lands are outside of the settlement area, they have been designated for non-agricultural development by the lower tier official plan. And these lands are deemed not to be within the prime agricultural area and are subject to the relevant policies of the lower tier official plan. In saying that, the Township of Malahide official plan designates the lands as suburban area where new development is directed to allow for infill and growth in areas adjacent to built up areas, which will not cause any land use conflicts. The lands are currently surrounded by existing low density uses to the south, west, and northeast. The lands are zoned small lot residential holding in the Township of Malahide zoning bylaw. In order to proceed with the proposed development, a zoning bylaw amendment is required to rezone the lands to rural residential site specific and open space. The holding provision prohibits the development of the property until a subdivision agreement has been registered on the lands. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment was passed by bylaw number 25-30 by Township Council on May 1st, 2025, in addition to the endorsement of the draft plan, subject to County Council's approval. County staff have reviewed the subject application under the requirements of the Planning Act, the provincial planning statement, county official plan, and the Township of Malahide official plan, and are satisfied that the application meets all relevant requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of draft plan of subdivision 34T-MA23001, subject to the conditions found in appendix F of the staff report. Thanks again, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diane. A resolution, please.
Resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grants draft plan approval to draft plan of subdivision 3TMA23001 Township of Malahide 9270 Rogers Road by Strick Baldinelli Moniz Limited on behalf of Peter and Anita Weeb dated November 18th, 2024, and that staff be directed to provide notice of decision subject to the conditions of final approval in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Mover in second, please. Widner and Jager, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Moving down to 66, Chief Administrative Officer and Clerk, radio working group recommendations. Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to members of committee. This report outlines some of the steps that were taken following a presentation that council received from the fire chiefs of our local municipal partners. We, in keeping with council direction, there was a a working group structured with Andrea and I involved to get a better understanding of the of the situation with respect to the the current radio system that our fire services use across the county. And I'm not proclaiming to be a radio expert, so this was all new to to both Andrea and I. And certainly, we we drew on the experience of our of our fire chiefs to understand just sort of the the current situation and how they use it and and things like that. So what what did come from those discussions is that the radio system is nearing its end of life. It's it's getting there rather quickly and that the chiefs are obviously concerned with that. They rely on on the utilization of that system for a lot of their emergency response. So they've asked, in in keeping with that presentation, that the Chief Ormarod of Central Elgin at the time, Chief Ormarod is now retired, but when he gave that presentation was asking if the county could at least get involved in some way to help facilitate and better understand sort of as the system reaches its end of life, can we facilitate moving forward with a more collective effort? So currently, the the system is, it's a little bit sort of piecemeal and and, you know, one party looks after one part and another party looks after another part. And that's where I think the chiefs are are asking the And that's where I think the chiefs are, are asking the county if there's a role for the county to play, uh, to assist in, in, uh, bringing to life a new, uh, radio system, um, for, uh, for our municipal partners to, to utilize. Um, so that's really the, the, the summary of, um, of the discussion that we had at, uh, at the working group. And we're looking for some council discussion and, and direction with respect to, uh, the role of the county moving forward.
Thank you, Blaine. It, it just seems that with automatic aid and, oh, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Warden, just before you read the resolution.
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, I'm wondering, before we, we put the, the motion on the floor, uh, if I could seek clarification on a slightly different matter because, uh, I think this is related to, we're trying to figure out the role of the, of the county and, and the services we provide to, uh, local municipal partners. And, um, I wanted to check with staff, like during our budget deliberations, I think we did pass a resolution, um, directing staff to conduct an analysis of services, uh, for shared services or the services we sell and, um, that the study be undertaken. And I'm wondering where that, where we are in that process. Because if that is coming, I, I may want council to consider a motion to defer today's report until we sort of have figured out where we stand on the shared services and what the county should get involved in.
Blaine, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Um, and just to, in response to Counselor Jiguer's question, yes, that motion was, uh, passed by council and included actually in the, uh, collective motions, um, that were passed during the budget discussions. And, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Warden, uh, I'll ask Mr. Loeb to speak, uh, about the exercise that, that we've asked him to undertake with respect to reviewing all the various agreements and the interactions between the county and the local municipal partners. So, uh, through you, Warden, Nick, if you could.
Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. Um, so the short answer is I expected it'll come to committee the whole at the first July meeting, uh, rather than June. I'd been hopeful for June, but it's at a stage now where I'm ready to share it sort of with other ELT members to review and make sure that we've captured everything. Uh, the exercise that I've undertaken is going through all of the, uh, sort of contractor shared services. That legal is aware that we are providing, whether or not there's sort of formal frameworks or, uh, official agreements in place, which is part of the direction from council. The thing I need to review with all, uh, team members across the senior leadership are whether, uh, I'm missing anything, whether, whether there's sort of soft services or just habits we've fallen into that, uh, I haven't captured. So that's the next phase of it. And just given our council report approval timelines, that makes it more likely it'll be the July eighth meeting rather than June twenty four.
Thank you, Nick. What's, uh, council's pleasure?
So I'm, I'm wondering if, if, uh, maybe the CEO can comment on these. I appreciate there, there is a problem that's been identified and our, the chiefs at the local level are, are concerned. Do we have a little bit of, like a little bit more time to consider that so we could wait for this other report?
Through you, Warden, to, uh, Counselor Jiguer and members of committee. Uh, yes, I think that would be prudent. I think given Mr. Loeb's timing on, on sort of wrapping up his analysis and, and the discussion, uh, of the final report with the executive team and bringing it to council, all being planned for within the next month and a half or so. The other benefit to that would be, um, we're currently in the recruitment for, uh, the manager of, uh, of this area. So that position hopefully would be filled at that point in time. So that would bring another level of expertise with respect to furthering this discussion. But given the month and a half, two months maybe, um, until council is, is fully informed with respect to the interactions, uh, between the county and the local municipal partners, I think that amount of time is available.
Okay, thank you. So entertain a motion to defer.
I will move forward.
Counselor Jiguer offers to move a second, please. Counselor Widner. Any questions or concerns?
Pardon me, Mr. Warden, just to defer until after receipt of the, uh, comprehensive review? So that could be mid-July or later. All right. Fair enough.
No further questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Jiguer. Motion to adjourn.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at twelve oh five PM to meet again on June tenth, twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM.
Move her in a second, please. Counselor Widner and Counselor Cookett. All in favor? Motion carries.